Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We have, initially, we've got the budget hearing. Those of you that have been at the meeting before will remember that we've already gone through the budget in detail, but in the advance of the budget vote coming up on the 15th of May, as we do every year, we're going to, we've allocated a half hour for a budget hearing, and then we'll adjourn the budget meeting and then go into our regular meeting at around 7:30. So, you know, I'll just make a very brief overview comments. You know, our budget, we are seeking an increase in the overall budget of 3.91 percent versus last year. That budget increase is smaller than the budget increases we've had for the last two years, so I do want people to take note of that. And we've gone through the budget in a very detailed way, line by line, and, you know, making sure that we're finding any savings that we can, and also, on the other hand, making sure we're being responsive to our patrons in the community and providing the services that our patrons and that the community needs and is asking for. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom to give a more detailed overview of the proposed 2018-2019 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, and welcome, everybody, to our early meeting before the next meeting. As Chuck indicated, this is our public budget hearing, and tonight we are presenting a budget for your consideration. We'll, I'll provide more details, and we are available to answer questions. And of course, please do not forget that on May 15th, you have the opportunity to exercise your right to make a decision about this budget, as well as the trustee election. Our budget this year, as Chuck indicated, is, we believe, a reasonably prudent and fair budget, addressing the needs of the New Rochelle community. It calls for a 3.91 percent increase, which, in real tax dollars, from year to year, the tax levy will increase by $205,000, which means, in terms of what it, how it relates to the average taxpayer, having consulted with the City Finance Commissioner, we shared our budget with Tracy Augman, the Commissioner, and she came back to us and told us that in terms of the average taxpayer, whomever that might be, the increase, this 3.91 percent increase, equals an increase over the year of just over $13 per year. Okay? Hopefully, that wasn't a commentary on, I think that was, I think there was not a moan, but a exclamation of glee. Right? So, we are seeing this increase, and I'd like to share some of the drivers that are tied to this increase, and many of them are not discretionary in nature. One is an increase of approximately $56,000. This increase ties to 2.75 increase our staff will receive beginning July 1 for the next fiscal year. And that increase was negotiated by the Personnel Committee and myself, and we think it's a fairly reasonable increase, given that our staff in the previous contract over the course of a four-year time period saw two years of 0 percent increases and two years of 2 percent increases. When we work in this area, we are very cognizant of what our peers are providing their employees with other public libraries, and as Yedira can testify, she was a very tough negotiator for the Personnel Committee, not too tough, though, but it was totally in keeping and comparable to our neighboring libraries, Yonkers and White Plains, Greenberg, and a few others. So, that is, that one increase, that's a non-discretionary increase. Another increase relates to medical costs, of course, as you all know. Unfortunately, medical insurance continues to go up. We have, none of us have any control over that, and our increase for our full-time staff, who receive the benefit, not part-timers nor anyone else, is an increase of approximately $50,000. The third non-discretionary increase, the third major driver in this increase that you're looking at, is an increase in our bond indebtedness, our payments. We have a ban, a bond anticipation note, that is coming due. We have to convert it to a bond, which means our payment schedule begins to become, quote unquote, exaggerated, so that's $50,000. There are some other increases that are not discretionary that I do want to share with you briefly. One is a materials budget increase of $50,000. Again, that's not, that's a discretionary increase on our, on the board's behalf, and it's one that I actually asked the board to consider after doing research. Our materials budget, comparatively speaking, out of 38 libraries, is among the lowest in the county. I believe we're fifth lowest out of 38 libraries. We just are losing buying power to buy books and non-print material, ebooks, for our patrons, so this $50,000 increase, we think, will help us bring us closer to our peer libraries and allow us to provide material for our patrons. And this increase is really very far-flung in terms of our many populations. It touches many of the people that use the library all the time. For example, large print materials become very popular, that's seeing an increase. Audio books, popular, an increase. Teen, our teens will have more money, will have books, more books and non-print material. Children's, bestsellers, a major area are ebooks, and that cuts across all of those age genres, as well as our Spanish speakers. We're going to create an e-Spanish collection that we don't have now. We're also looking at quite a lot more Spanish materials. Our population in New Rochelle, I believe, is now approximately 25 percent Spanish-speaking. They are wonderful users of our library, they use our library in all ages and all ways, so we want to connect to that usage and provide more materials for them. So that's basically in terms of our materials budget, that's the nutshell summary. We are also asking for more money in our program budget, $10,000 more. Our friends provide most of our money. We felt we needed to add a little bit for our programming. We're finding that technology, we're not keeping up with the kind of technology people need. We need to hire outside experts to come in, in addition to our staff. We're looking at more cultural programming. We're particularly interested in programming more for our teens as well, so that's another major area of increase. A smaller area, but no less important area, broadband. Our internet bandwidth is, which was once pretty significant, at 50 megabytes, I think that's the right term. We're going to double it to 100 because we're finding, as the afternoon progresses, the internet slows, and we need to have quick internet access for all our patrons. So, you know, as I step, as I step back from all this minutia, I just want to remind you of a few things. First of all, out of every dollar that a taxpayer pays in New Rochelle, one penny goes to the library, one penny. The other thing I want to highlight is in terms of per capita expenditures, public expenditures. Our library is ninth lowest in the county, which is fairly modest, and yet our expenses in terms of personnel are fairly low. All these statistics I'm sharing are from the Westchester Library System Annual Report, and in terms of staffing, for every 2,000 residents, we are 38th lowest in the county. So I think what that means is that we have a busy staff, a staff who wear many hats, who work hard, and we're not overspending in that area. And before I close, I just want to acknowledge our advocacy groups that make such a big difference, that help us try to keep our tax requests low. Our foundation, a tremendous organization full of volunteers who donate money to us, usually anywhere from $60,000 to $100,000 a year. They're actually beginning a capital campaign to help us meet the match for our $275,000 state construction grant to transform the circulation lobby area. So the foundation, big supporters, I hope you consider supporting them. Our friends, again, they're tremendous supporters. All of this income from the friends is generated through the donations given to the library that the friends repackage, sell back to the community at a modest cost. They give us upwards of $60,000, $70,000 a year. They allow us to do great programs. They allowed us to restore our Norman Rockwell Land of Enchantment. They allow us to add money to our materials budget and other special projects. In the partnership for the Huguenot Children's Library, they give us $20,000 a year, $10,000 for the Great Summer Patio Program that will be beginning in early July, and also for all the children's programming at our branch library from September through June. So, that's it. I've given you a lot of information, and I know both Chuck and the board and myself are here to answer any questions in terms of public discussion.
Any questions on the budget?
You can sign off.
Yeah, I don't, did we do a sign up?
I don't, did we do a sign up for?
Yeah, we already had it, I didn't sign up.
That's fine.
Okay.
You can talk.
You can talk.
If you want to come up.
The sheet will catch up.
The microphone's on the stand.
Marjorie Sacks, 14 Lakeside Drive. I wasn't intending to speak, but after listening to the budget and after all these months and years of listening to the board and the staff, I just, first of all, want to appreciate the time and attention that you put into this budget. I really, we hear about it each month, the Budget Committee of the Board, Mr. Giaffino and all the staff, I think, have put enormous mindfulness into this budget, and I really want to appreciate you for that. So I am in full support of this budget. I want to particularly highlight the enhancements and improvements and the additional materials, and what it feels to me like you're doing is to continue to update and make this the state-of-the-art library that it is, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't think there was a sign up.
Or comments on the budget from anybody? If you'd like to come, just come up.
I could change the doors.
Okay. Well, I think then we call the meeting, we'll adjourn the meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn the 2018-2019 budget hearing at the library. All in favor?
Aye.
Daniel seconded. Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is the commencement of our normal, normal meeting, so we'll run through our normal agenda. First item on the agenda is downtown development update. We don't have a further update from the last meeting. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a further update from the last meeting. Before we go, are there any, are there any items, is there anything we need to do before we go to the public discussion? Are there any other items you wanted to top?
No, no.
Okay. We will go to the public to be heard. Dorothy Oliver?
I was trying to get an English correction, you just can say it.
English?
It's back on this side.
Now, what I have to do is, do I have to push it?
I think it's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Oliver. My address is 162 Clinton Avenue here in New Rochelle. I'm a lifelong resident here. I taught school here, reading, at the elementary level for two years. First, I would like to say to each and every one of you, please believe me, I'm your friend. I am your friend, all right? Just want to clear the ear here. Yes, Marjorie and I, for a little over two, two and a half years almost, we have been attending these meetings. We met those of you that were here two years ago, and then new appointees, but we have only had the interest of this library intact. That's all we want. We want the truth, yet there have been many days, we have walked out here honestly to all you millennials, let me tell you. We have been frustrated, we felt that you weren't being upfront or showed transparency to us, we didn't know sometimes whether you were telling us the truth or hiding from us. But that's going to happen when people are meeting together, you know, and you have a problem and you want to discuss it, and we are on both sides of the fence, we're going to have misunderstandings. It's nothing personal. It's nothing personal. And as you go along in your young lives and being in office, you're going to run across things that are going to displease you, things that aren't, that are going to be said that aren't true. But I was in my church just a few weeks ago, and someone made a mistake and said about this library and that it included the Ruby D. Greene. I said, "No, no, no, no. It does not." And anytime, and I think that's the only time I've ever heard a misquote about what was said that had been going on here at the library, but as a rule, when we hear something, we correct it. We correct it because we are really your friends. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lourdes Fontes. I live at 76 Vaughan Avenue. You guys are doing a great job. You guys have something that's very special, and you've kept it special. It hasn't changed. People walk into this place of all colors, races, languages, economic backgrounds. There is no fear, there is no somebody's better than anybody. This is their home, and you've made sure to keep that sense and that, that sense that this is mine for everybody. You've kept that happening. There is no doubt that our town is going through a major gentrification. We know it, we sense it, it's changing. All of our parking spaces have been sold to the developers, all of our public areas are at risk. There's going to be big buildings everywhere, there's going to be people living, coming in who want to live in fancy places, and people of color, and people of different languages and cultures, and people that may not be welcome in other places are going to begin not to be welcomed here, because gentrification does that. And you guys are the one place that could say, "Uh-uh, not in my backyard." This continues to be a place where all are welcome, no matter what. And I'm very, very happy to hear your budget, very happy to hear the increases, because that means you're invested in it, you're going to make it even better, and it's going to continue to say, open arms, this is New Rochelle. Because that's our reputation, right? That's always been our reputation. We're New Rochelle. There are many cultures here. Everyone is welcome here. So I urge you, I'm going to say it again, we're going to keep on saying it, we hope you're listening, don't sell it, don't sell the property, don't sell the building, don't sell the air rights, don't let them touch you in any way, shape, or form, and continue to say the message, you may sell the, you may sell all of New Rochelle, but you ain't, you ain't going to do it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Miller?
It's kind of nice to hear.
Best thing, Alden.
Yeah. Good evening.
I was, I think it was the other night, I was reviewing the last port of trustee meetings, and it's neat, guys, thank you for this videotaping, because it was, it's the first time I've really looked back at a meeting, and it was, it was cool to be able to do that. And Chuck, I was, you know, particularly kind of going back over the statements, you know, that you read for the board, which I, which I really appreciate, and the minutes, I think, had not yet been published, so I don't, I'm going to kind of, I quoted as best I could, and correct me if I, if I got anything wrong here. I heard you say that, you know, really make a clear statement that the library will always own the space it occupies, and the board will not entertain a situation where the library is a renter or lesser of property owned by another entity, and the board is committed to having the library remain the cultural heart of the downtown area. And lastly, I think that the board is committed to providing transparency into all actions it takes or plans to take in relation to the downtown redevelopment and all the duties we perform. I really, I appreciated those statements. To my, to my knowledge, in the year or more I've been at these meetings, I think it was the first time this board has made a statement regarding the future ownership of the library, and, and I think it went a long way, and I appreciate it. You know, Dorothy, as you said, there has been much talk about transparency, and so I'm, so I'm curious, so I'm, so I'm interested in trying to take this a step further of, the statement was that the library will always own the space it occupies. It doesn't yet address the question of whether the library will sell this building and this land, and, and I think this is the fundamental question that's led, I think now, is it almost 1,000 people, to sign a petition about this, is really that fundamental question. In recent community meetings, a number of candidates for the board have made the statement that if elected, they would not sell this building or this land, and, you know, this is, I think, the crux of what everybody's really concerned about. You know, we, I think, as Dorothy, as you've said, and others, you guys have nurtured a beautiful library, and all of us are really deeply appreciative of it, and we recognize it's not perfect, we recognize it can always be improved, and we also recognize that this current location and ownership of this building and this space is profoundly important to us. So I guess, in the context of candidates making this statement, my question to the board is, are you all prepared to also make that statement? Is the board prepared to address this issue directly of whether you will consider selling this building and this land? I think that hasn't been addressed yet, and it's, it's at the crux of what we're all really concerned about. Is there a thought of addressing that question?
The, the board is not prepared to make any statement beyond the statement that we made at the last meeting at this time. Candidates have obviously made statements they've made, which
Yeah.
...speak for themselves, and, and that's sort of the current state of affairs.
Okay. So, you know, I think, as, you know, as we said, this is, and I think you all know that this is, this is the fundamental question, and it's the one we, I think, many of us will keep coming back to and, and looking for clarity on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Four minutes on the nose, that was impressive. Not that I'm keeping track. Maxine Galub?
Hi. I'm Maxine Galub. I live at 98 Bayberry Lane, and it's always a hard act to follow down. I just want to make one very small point that came up in the meeting last month. Several people spoke to a concern about kind of the technology capacity of the library or the need to continue to grow the library's capabilities to reach activities that we can't possibly do now with greater capital investment. And I'm in the healthcare field, so I think of things in terms of primary care, specialty care, secondary care, et cetera. The point I want to make is that a community library serves 90, 95 percent of what the community needs, and we are doing that now. Yes, there will always be a specialized request where you might have to go to a bigger library, and that's okay. In a community hospital, like the one Montefiore has here, they can only do 90 or 95 percent of what the community needs. If you need open-heart surgery or brain surgery, you go to a bigger hospital. People here can go to a bigger library in a nearby community if there is some small thing they need that's not available. What's much more important to those of us who have been speaking, I think, is that the library continues to be available and accessible to the 90 to 95 percent of us who use it on a daily basis. And I really think it's important to keep that in mind, that we don't have to be every single thing, because we're doing really the bulk of what the community, our students need. Thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Sacks?
Oh, she's already spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the budget meeting. Yeah, yeah.
It's a deja vu. Sorry, Marjorie.
Did I ruin the other side over there? Who are you?
And first of all, I just want to say that one thing I didn't say at the budget was I really appreciate the salary increases for the staff. I think that's hugely important, and they really are, it's well-deserved, so. I do want to just say that when Dan was talking about 1,000 signatures, the online petition has about 730-something, and we also have a paper, a hard copy petition that has several hundred, so we do have close to 1,000 signatures, and that's going to keep growing. And speaking of the petition, because there are a lot of people who cannot be here at the meetings but did make comments on the online petition, I do want to read some of these comments. I don't know if you've had a chance to do it, but they're very powerful, and instead of you hearing this in my words and some of the regular's words, I'd like you to hear some of these things. So, "It's a wonderful intellectual and community asset that is a gem not to be disturbed. The taxpaying citizens of New Rochelle do not want the library moved. It's the hub of the city and cannot be moved or squeezed into two floors of a building. This is a place that people get knowledge. My kids enjoy borrowing books and learn stuff that's not taught in schools, but that makes them better citizens and respect humanity. That cannot be traded for anything, not even billions of dollars. Our children and generations to come will always benefit from this kind of knowledge. Keep off our library. The library adds value and gives a community feeling to New Rochelle. My kids have benefited greatly from the New Rochelle library. Hands off our library. I grew up going to the library, as have my kids. It's a treasure, a place full of information and activity, a quiet refuge. It helps make New Rochelle great, and the citizens of New Rochelle want to keep the library, not get another high-rise building that will add to the ridiculous overcrowding in our schools. Take our library and give it to a developer who will probably pay no taxes and get breaks left and right? No, thank you. An easily accessed library is at the heart of a vibrant downtown. For RXR, the library is just another site that can be developed." And I promise you, I didn't say this, this is somebody else. "They don't care about the community or what ultimately happens to the New Rochelle downtown or its residents. It's important we voice our opposition to unbridled development that negatively impacts quality of life for residents. The New Rochelle Public Library Building and its property should not be up for sale today, tomorrow, or ever. The library is a great resource to the entire community. My family and I all use it. My girls love taking out books and attending the events offered. I don't get why so much money was put for improvements to then go sell it. Greed shouldn't be the determination." This is a good one. "Are you kidding me? Sell the land and the library building? I pay a lot of taxes, including a separate tax for the library, but not so that private developers can make a profit from public lands. We already have one name to be omitted, I.S.O.R., in the center of town. We do not need another one. Say no to this proposal. I have lived in New Rochelle for more than three decades and know that the library is a critical resource to all people who live in this city. Selling the property would cause irreparable harm to the city and its reputation. The library is such a
Four minutes, if you could just conclude. Thank you.
All right, I'll end with this one. Wow, I didn't get too much. "The library and the neighboring park need to remain at the center of the city. Whereas I was skeptical a few weeks ago, having since visited other libraries in other cities, I am convinced that the library needs to remain autonomous. There is no need for evaluation where there is a firm commitment to remain independent."
Thank you. Arnie Fleischer?
Hi, my name is Arnie Fleischer. I've been a resident of Glenwood Lake for over 30 years. I was at the meeting last month, and three things in particular struck me. One was the comment at the beginning of the meeting complaining about the public criticizing what the board is doing based on rumors, not on fact. Next one was the board's statement that it would always own where it's located, and the third was that since this is not city property, the library is not owned by the city but by the library, the library board would make an independent decision. Those things were in my mind earlier today when I was looking at the foundation, New Rochelle Public Library Foundation website, and there's a section, the last section of their website, is called "An Eye on the Future." And after some boilerplate statement about how the library is an invaluable community resource, there's a sentence that says, "The only real question is whether the library resource, there's a sentence that says, "The only real question is whether the library will remain in its present location." And then the second clause of that sentence really struck me. And if it does, whether it will continue to be a standalone building or part of another If that statement is accurate, if the foundation, which is the primary fundraiser for the library, has its understanding correct, then it seems to me that that last part of the sentence contradicts the statement of the board that it will always own where it is unless it sells air rights to its current location and remains as it is as part of a larger structure, which raises another whole other set of issues. If the foundation's statement is wrong, then it shows that even the primary fundraiser for the library has no idea of what's going on, hence rumors. As far as independent decision-making goes, and excuse me, please don't take this as a personal attack, I am a little hostile institutionally, having spent a lot of time in government myself before I retired. However, I think your decision can, depending on what it is, be nominally independent in that it will be made by the board as the board. But I saw nothing last month, and the eye-rolling of certain members of the board and the body language of others did nothing to make me sangle in about the fact that you will resist influences or attempt to influence you, subtle or otherwise, by the mayor, the city manager, the city development commissioner, and the city council. So, I am not at all confident that you will, well-intentioned people, and I'm sure you all are, make foolish, short-sighted decisions all the time. If you're so keen on studies, do a study about reconfiguring the space so it can provide the so-called 21st century benefits other people said last month. The fact that there is a bookstore on the first floor of the library proves that space can be reconfigured. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Rifkin.
Good evening.
Last month, I need the microphone.
May J.
Jeff Rifkin.
Last month, I made some comments about the utter necessity of a commons for there
to be healthy living, vibrant living, in any entity, a city, a municipality, a town, or a village. So, I will skip over the definitions of the commons and how significant it was historically and so on. In order to live in a city, we need to be able to think about the things that make a city livable. Rights, liberties held in common, devoted to and bestowed upon all. That's a reflection back to the definitions I offered last month on the meaning of the commons. The Ruby D Park and this library with its Ozzy Davis Auditorium constitute the New Rochelle Commons. Its physical and social centrality give the idea its power. If the good of, if the goal of development already underway in the city of New Rochelle is to attract people from New York City, I've heard mention of New Rochelle being thought of as a sixth borough, perhaps it is worth a moment to pause and think about the main library in Manhattan. It sits between 40th and 42nd Streets, 5th and 6th Avenue, and it's coupled with the Bryant Park, a truly world-class research facility. Its doors opened in 1911. New Central Park, Carnegie Hall, Grand Central Station, thank you so much. It is a true commons for the city of New York. At its opening, thousands of people walked into miles of shelves and a million new books. By the way, the most sought-after text on that first day was entitled "The Ethical Ideas of Our Time" by N.I. Groth. It was a work about the German philosopher Friedrich Nietzsche and Leo Tolstoy. The Brooklyn Public Library at the Grand Army Plaza opened in 1941. Next door to the Brooklyn Museum, the Brooklyn Botanical Garden, it too is a true commons. Manhattan and Brooklyn would be unthinkable without these institutions exactly where they are. If everything has a price, nothing has value. When there are places beyond price, then these places acquire the kind of real value that will bring people here. What this all boils down to, I think, is a question. Is money the only vocabulary and language we have with which to see and analyze how a municipality ought to develop? If so, we will know what is being lost, but only when it is too late.
That concludes the public discussion. Moving on to the regular business, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I took a look at them. I didn't see any issues. I will note that the minutes include as attachments the statement that I made and the statement that Deirdre, as vice president, made as attachments to the minutes. Does anybody have any feedback on the minutes? No?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. Minutes approved. Are there any financial reports that you want to highlight?
We do have financial information. It's included in your packet. We are moving along. We're exactly where we need to be in terms of years, year left and monies left as well. I suspect that a more relevant financial discussion will be when we conclude the fiscal year and we can provide a summary of where we are. But at this particular point in time, we are in very good shape.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything you want to highlight in terms of usage statistics?
Unfortunately, statistics, because our meeting is so early in the month, and that is because of our need to have a public hearing so many days before the election, we weren't able to pull together statistics, but we'll have the statistics back for you in June. But again, we're being heavily used in both print collection, technology programs. It's been a very busy time now that the weather seems to be getting better.
Excellent. Thank you. I think, do we have a, is there, do you have anything in writing from Dr. Gray?
Unfortunately, I did not hear from Dr. Gray.
I did. I'm sorry. She's not coming.
She's not. No, she is.
Obviously.
She's not here tonight. And I really, myself, I do not have anything to share from the Westchester library system.
Okay. Thank you. President's report. I will just mention one item which kind of dovetails with community relations, but I appeared on Hayna's radio show, which I know some others have done more recently, and it was really fun, actually. I wasn't, I sort of, when going into it, wasn't particularly, you know, had never done that before. I thought it was great. So, I would encourage other board members to, that haven't done it, you know, Hayna does the hour once a month. She also does 15-minute spots more frequently.
Occasionally with the morning, the morning drive show.
So, you know, it's great, Hayna, even though she's moved out of, the community continues to be super supportive. So, you know, if you're interested in appearing on the show, she would love to have you. And I promise you, Hayna's not a difficult interviewer, as you would probably expect.
It's the, when is it? It's the...
It's 12 noon. It's WVox, of course, our local radio station, and I'm thinking it's the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday of each month.
I'm supposed to be on it.
It has the highest ratings of the whole year. No, I'm just kidding.
Is that fake news? I hope not.
That, I was, I was not telling the truth when I said that. So, just moving down the agenda, I'll turn it over to you, Tom, for the director's report.
Sure. Thank you, Chuck. You know, my report is not terribly dissimilar from the previous month. Things are good. Our state grant monies, I always like to lead with our grant monies, and my theater HVAC money, which has arrived, and more information will follow in the Buildings and Grounds report, but the, but the project is underway. Our grant monies total over $78,000 in that instance, which is exciting. We are still waiting for our $275,000 grant that was awarded us by the State of New York for construction grant monies. That money will be used towards the improvement of the circulation area, the gateway area, we call it a new desk, create a new office space. We'll have patron self-checkout, patron pickup holds. We'll have a new security desk adjacent to our new circulation desk. We'll have a gate that will be able to allow us to have programs in the theater and the lobby while the library itself is closed. The foundation is beginning a program to raise the match money for our $275,000, and they're in the quiet phase of the campaign, but they have been successful. I'll wait for Chris Ellen to share more information, but it's begun, and it's begun very successfully. I'll leave you with that. But with that, I would ask you all to consider donating to this, to this very worthy effort to allow us to continue to improve this building and our library for everybody.
I just have a question. Did you say when the HVAC is going to start?
The project has started.
So, they're already working in the ducts and stuff?
They are working. Yeah, yeah. No, they, there's a schedule in your packet, and there's also information, the first memo. They've actually commandeered a portion of the library. They're in there, they're changing it. They're, we're trying to set up a, basically, an appointment to allow the rig to drop the HVAC equipment on our roof. We have to work with the city, and they've been very helpful to date. We have every, have every expectation that the new theater HVAC system will be in operation when we begin summer programming on July 9th.
Oh, great.
From June 11th to July 7th, we, the theater is going dark, which means we may not be meeting here in June, only because there'll be construction. We've worked with Barbara Davis and Community Relations so that we provide as minimal problems and delays as possible. We had judged that to be a good time. We also were very anxious to get our theater comfortable before the summer gets hot and...
Summer happened yesterday.
Yeah, I know it did, and we're a little behind the curveball. Didn't, didn't expect that.
One day.
Where do you think we're going to go if we're not here?
I'm not sure. We were talking, it's possible we may go here, but if not, we may, we could hold our meeting in the, in the first floor outside of Community Relations.
Okay.
We could also hold it in the, in the lobby. Years and years ago, when there was a smaller audience, we used to hold it on the third-floor staff lounge area, which is totally inappropriate right now in terms of accessibility and in size. So, we will, we will, as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
But it'll be here.
But it'll be here.
Yeah, it'll be here.
And you just have to show up on that, on that Thursday at 7:30, and we will be here. Here being the building.
It's the next meeting.
Yeah.
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 Can we just confirm that, though?
Yep.
It won't affect the newsletter, the June, sorry, the, sorry. The June 2nd kicks off the market, like that, the summer, the grand market things that we do.
That is, that is fine.
So, there's no impact.
Not at all. No.
June 23rd is the summer reading kickoff, which will happen...
Yep, absolutely. All of those programs go forward. We're still partnering with The Bid. It's been a great partnership where we provide summer programming, children's and family programming, so that's exciting.
Yeah.
And don't forget the book sale happening on Saturdays, too.
That's right. That's right. The Friends Bookstore is open on Saturdays. Please stop by. You'll find something that you want, I'm sure of that. And so, so things will continue. We'll continue to improve this building. We're also looking towards another state grant that will be due sometime in August, and that grant would probably relate to improvements on our second floor, which, which would be things as simple and cosmetic, never that simple, as new flooring, paint. But we're also looking at possibly increasing our local history room, looking to standardize our tutoring space, looking to reconfigure our areas where we provide social service assistance so we can provide more privacy for our, for our patrons and clients. Now, the configuration is one in which it was a more open space. That's not really satisfactory. And, and other things. So, so we're continuing to forge forward and improve this building, and thanks to our legislators and all of you as unofficial lobbyists, there is more construction grant money available for the state than ever before, and Westchester will get its fair share, which means hopefully New Rochelle will get its fair share. So, having said that, I just want to summarize that the budget season is well underway. Every year, we send out over 70 letters to neighborhood associations and feelers to other organizations, the simple request to ask us to come and let us talk about the library, its budget proposal, its services, its successes, and issues of the day. And we were, we heard from nine organizations, neighborhood associations, synagogue, point-of-view political organizations, and I thought it was very successful. We had great board support. We had our candidates, for the most part, turn out at, at these meetings. Not all the candidates, not all the time, that's an impossibility, but really good turnout. And we, we received fairly positively in terms of our library, what we're doing, our budget requests, and again, I remind you, May 15th, Budget Day, please, and Vote Day, please go out and vote. We have four vacancies. Two trustee slots are five-year terms, two are the remaining one-year terms from two board resignations, and so, we have five candidates, and so, I encourage you to vote. The, the mailer that goes to every household in New Rochelle will be dropped in the mail tomorrow. That's as soon as we can do it. We have to wait for this, the conclusion of this meeting, and you all folks should get it if you haven't seen it already. It's here in this, in this room tonight. You all should get it well before the vote on May 15th.
Mary, you handed out your copy to the audience already?
And I think, I'd just love to highlight the...
Please do.
The budget, Tom Lee does a distinct attempt to sort of summarize the highlights of the library, so there's two sides of it. Underneath all of our names, you'll see some of the stats on the programming and the tax returns, but then also, most importantly, I think, just the utilization by patrons to the library and the support. And just, I think it's a real testament to the leadership that you've shown in running the operation and sort of advocating for us. And then the summary on the other side, just sort of on the bottom of all the numbers, talks about the monthly impact, which Whitney has so succinctly summarized as being a dollar and 16 cents more a month with the new budget. So, it just, it's a cool, easy way to kind of review it on your way to work or while you're having coffee in the morning or something else. I don't know.
Of course, you want to do that. You want to read it on your way to work.
Thank you, Jeff.
It's hard to follow someone like you, dear, after that summary, and I, so I won't. I will just say that it's a 3.91% increase, which equals a tax delivery increase year to year of $205,000. And one penny of every dollar you pay, according to the city of New Rochelle, goes to the library. So, please vote on May 15th. Let's see what else. Sort of a fun, exciting thing, when you entered the theater today, I don't know if you looked up, there are new banners, banners from Dale Zorlin. Yeah, they're beautiful, aren't they? Yeah. And we have to thank the genius of Dale, she's quite an artist, her husband Fred, who's the engineer in the family, who helped figure out how to put this up, our custodians, who took a chance and went up in a cherry picker that was shaking.
Oh, my.
It was, yeah, God, yeah, God bless him, because...
I'm happy.
I'm not sure I could do that.
It worked out, Rob. Yes.
I'm not sure I could do that.
It worked out well.
I've kind of aged out of the cherry picker scene, so, but Rob did a great job, and so we have these great banners, and they, and they complement the banners in the other two atrons in the lobby, which are by Dale, and they also complement the art that we have on the side of the building that faces Memorial Highway. And of course, Dale was awarded the first set of banners adjacent to the Friends Bookstore many years ago through, through an artist, an artist competition, I guess, that was managed by the New Rochelle Council on the Arts. So, she's a great artist, and we're thrilled to have her art here. Public art's really important, and the, the board appreciates that, and the community seems to like it as well. So, and, and last but not least, foundation. Our foundation, one of their many projects that they sponsored was to allow us to continue to work with public art in the building. And let's see, with that, I just want to mention... And let's see, with that, I just want to mention that the foundation has two board meetings coming, coming up. One is May twenty-first, one is June nineteenth. And of course, their, their project, which they are trying to raise that ninety-plus-thousand dollars, and I know, but talking a lot about it. This was their spring newsletter. It's a great newsletter. It highlights all the great things that they've done and that they've helped allow us to do, and has information about donation possibilities. Okay, I'm almost done, folks. Okay, so, last but not least, our-
Sorry.
Tom?
You know, their, public has not indicated any interest.
I don't, I would check with Chris.
I, I could reach out to Chris Ellen and get back to you, Marjorie.
I think it's a, I think it's a private foundation, yeah.
Yeah, but I, but I will, I will get a final answer.
But I'm sure, like, every, they might have an annual meeting or something like that where-
Yeah, I would, I would check. I'm not sure what the story is.
I'm not telling it.
Well, they certainly have a series of public events, cocktails and conversations held at our local restaurant, Alvin and Friends.
But those are fundraisers. I'm just wondering if they-
Right, right, but they're an opportunity to chat. But I, I'll find out with, from Chris as well. You know, last but certainly not least, I will close with our Friends. Great organization. As I've encouraged you to, everywhere you are, whether in the audience or in, out in our cable world or internet world, please consider donating to the Friends. Could be library materials, books you're not using, or could be something financial. They do a great organization, they work incredibly hard. There's usually at least three or four people here per day selling books, organizing books, and they're inspiring. They're mature people. One friend is ninety-nine years old, as of April. She's still pushing the book trucks, picking up things, doing all kinds of, yeah, it's really quite amazing. When, when a hundred arrives, we're, and it will-
We'll have a big party.
We'll have a party. So, our Friends have, Whitney mentioned the fact that the Friends have great book sales on Saturdays, every Saturday, every Tuesday, every Thursday. So, please come, stop, you'll find something you like, I'm sure of it, for yourself, your family, your friends. And they have a big, a big monthly book sale that is starting tomorrow and Saturday as well, so please consider going. And that's it.
Sorry. Oh, Tom, do you want to talk about the Alvin and Friends that you, you didn't attend?
I didn't.
Yeah. But they had, um, the, yeah, it was the, it was the Friends who had the-
Foundation.
Sorry, sorry, the foundation who had the cocktails and conversation. It was on, uh, thank you, sorry, I, there's a, I was there.
It was last Thursday.
It was, thank you, it was the last Thursday. It's been a blur of a lot of outings and the, the space in Alvin and Friends was packed and it was just really heartening to see the vast support for, for our library and for local authors and community events, and it was, it was wonderful to be there.
Two local authors, Amy, Amy Bass, of course, I'm dropping the-
I have it up, I'm not, I'm not going to say me either.
Krevetsky was the moderator and David Friend. David Friend, the naughty nineties, Amy Bass, one gore. Got it?
All right. Thank you. Do we have a personnel report?
We do not, Chuck.
Okay, no, nothing. So, we'll go on to the committee reports. Budget Committee, I don't think we've got anything beyond what we just went through. We've beaten the budget to death. The Building and Grounds Committee, is there an update?
It's exciting because we have this stuff starting.
It is exciting, yeah. We, it, it is, it is starting.
Good work, guys.
And, yeah, I think our Buildings and Grounds Committee, Quentin Gregg Varian, who was very instrumental, he's gone now, but was an important part, Whitney as well-
He's gone now, you sound like he's dead. He's gone now.
Well, you know, when you're off the board, it's a state of-
He's dead to you.
I consider-
He's dead to him.
Suspended animation, that's great status. And Deirdre.
No, no, I'm not on it. I was last year.
I said Whitney.
Oh, you did?
I did say Whitney.
Oh. Does it sound like you said Deirdre?
Yeah, I thought you're-
Last year.
Last year, okay.
It's Greg Quentin and me.
Now.
That's right, so Greg's slot is vacant.
Oh, am I on it?
No, I think we just, we just have some committee vacancies.
Sorry. Have I made everything totally muddy? Oh, sorry.
Okay, maybe I'm on it. No, I don't-
You're not.
You're not on it.
Listen to the board president. Anyway, so, so, so we are moving, it's exciting. We have a great sort of consultant who's managing things, as I already talked a lot about what's happening, and we expect to have this theater online and cool on July ninth.
Wonderful.
We should have a party then, too.
We should.
Community Relations, Foundation and Huguenot Children's Partnership?
Sure, so, um, just-
You might want to move the-
We're going to have a party, no, I'm kidding. There is a party happening, however. So, the thirty-seventh Annual Art Children, Art Artist Exhibit at the Lumen Winter Gallery here at the New Rochelle Public Library will be from May second through May twenty-third. The artwork is of students of the seven elementary schools will be displayed from May second to the ninth, and then the high school and middle school students' artwork will be displayed the sixteenth to the twenty-third. They had the reception for the elementary school yesterday, and then for the middle school and high schools, that will happen on Wednesday, May sixteenth, four p.m. to five-thirty, so if you have time, go and support our students and their artwork. In addition to that, the Sound Shore Corral performs Mayfest concerts at the library. That will be at May, May sixth, from three p.m. to four p.m. here in this theater. In addition to that, as you guys know, there is a book sale on Saturday, May fifth, and if you are around tomorrow, as far as our community is concerned, they are actually going to be doing the New Rochelle Bike Share Launch Event tomorrow, May fourth, at eleven-thirty a.m. at the Anderson Plaza, so that's the corner of La Count Place and Anderson Street, so if you want to check that out.
Do we have a library share station close to us here in the library?
So, I, I've asked for it, because my husband rode his bike to the last meeting-
Do we, do we not have one?
And he doesn't have one, so he needed a comment as he was at the meeting.
Right, so, the closest one is actually across, across the street, so yes, we-
Yes?
Yeah, so that's, that's the plaza, that's the Anderson Plaza, that's the closest.
Did you ask him to put one here?
Yeah, that's-
It's, it's on the shortlist.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then-
How did they forget? How did they mess that up?
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I met her at the Chamber event and said, bring one to the library.
Right, right. And then, in addition to that, anyone looking for camps, My Brothers Keeper New Row is hosting a camp fair, and that camp fair is on the City Hall Rotunda, Wednesday, May ninth, from four-thirty to seven p.m. There's a lot of camps that are open, Parks and Rec, for example, like Jefferson is already packed, they were packed by four day, in four days, they were packed. So, if you're looking for other camp opportunities, it's a free event to kind of do an expo kind of walkthrough, and they also have financial aid information that will be available through My Brothers Keeper and the Campership Fund and all other partners that are helping our youth in our community to get, get in, into camps. Do you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, do you have more?
No, I have more, but, but you can-
No, no, I'll wait till you're done.
And then, I got word that they put a new camp at the Saint, Saint Catherine's by Lincoln, and the camp is going to call, that's kind of a partnership with Parks and Rec, Summer on Lincoln. So, it's a new camp that's going to be there, because it was, it was kind of hard to find camps around that, that area there. And then, Chamber of Commerce is having their first annual golf outing on May seventeenth, so if you golf, might as well just go support and have a good time. And that's it.
I just, in, in the spirit of greater communication about our programs, just through traveling around and attending various Neighborhood Association events, and-
That's what you've been doing.
This is what I've been doing for the last three weeks. It's delightful, of course, but most recently, I was at Wednesday's Ruach Luncheon, which is for seniors in the Young Israel synagogue, and they were saying that Hana used to bring the newsletters and drop them off, and they really want to know what's going on, because there are so many services that they would love to participate in and would, would anyone be willing, and so, so they-
I, I, around the corner, I'd be willing.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's one of probably many places that would benefit from receiving a drop of newsletters, so something-
We get one in the mail every month, is it that one?
Um, it, it, the newsletter is sent by the, being a, being a member of the Friends, the newsletter is sent by the Friends along with flyers. Actually, we do drop newsletters at Young Israel, but the gentleman that we were talking to said, it's not enough, we need more. And we can do that.
If you want to send me a packet regularly, it's like, literally, I can always just go drop it off.
They were so excited by all the programs.
And in fact, my neighbors all go there, so I'd be happy to give them to one of my neighbors and so-
That'd be great, thank you. I, I just want to add too, just one thing. Earlier this year, we engaged into, with a partnership with Iona College regarding an opportunity to enhance our website by having filmed vignettes by Iona students that highlight the library. And I was hoping tonight that we could show them, we just kind of couldn't get it together end of the semester sort of thing, but I'm hoping in June, it, there were five groups and they had a series of vignettes about the library that totaled just a little under ten minutes. I think we could maybe next month watch them, and they were terrific. They were clever and they illuminated things going on in the library, and they were pretty funny, too. So, that was, that was a great partnership with Iona, and we hope to continue to do that sort of thing in the future.
Any parodies of you?
Well, you know, Chuck.
Or the board.
I, I thought it was more of an homage, you know? But, you know, I'm, I'm prejudiced that way.
Thank you. Any other community?
No, no, that's it.
Finance, Treasury and Audit Committee, I don't think we have an update. The agreement that we have agreed with the school district to just memorialize our financing arrangement, you know, that they've, they issued debt on our behalf, has been sitting with them for a while for their signature-
For a while.
But we don't believe there's any issue with it. We think we've agreed.
I think so.
So, Tom is continuing to follow up with the superintendent, and if we don't hear something in the next week, why don't you let me know and I'll call the school board chairperson.
I wonder what's keeping them so busy.
Why don't we wait till after the, yeah, why don't, why don't we wait till after the vote? Because I think they're-
Maybe, maybe the week of the term.
But this was before, so this, I have to say, though, we've been-
I don't even know that this went to the school board. I don't, I don't even know that, I don't know if it went to the board or not.
No, but this, this has been kind of hanging on since before.
Couple of years.
Why don't we?
Agreed, but at this point-
I don't think we'll get, I don't think we'll hear from them.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
We just don't want to forget about it.
No.
Oh, that's true, too.
Is there anything?
That happened, then we're pretty much-
I don't think, I don't think we have anything else from the Finance Committee. Anything from the Personnel Committee?
You know, I don't have a Personnel Committee report, but I, what I wanted to mention, and I forgot, but Daniel helped me remember, is that I meant, I indicated early, earlier this evening that we are having our Summer Fun on the Patio program as sponsored by the partnership, and we have counselor positions, and we're going to be posting them through civil service. Daniel, take note, and other people, anybody in the audience or watching, have children of, you know, sixteen or older who might be interested, we will have some positions vacant. We don't, we don't manage the hiring, it's, it's managed by the partnership board, but I want to encourage anybody who'd be interested in such a position, it's a great opportunity and think about it.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Anything from the Policy Committee?
The, how about the holds? We were talking about a vote at some point in regard to the holds fee.
Oh, yeah, but we haven't-
We haven't.
Met, met again.
Yeah.
No, we haven't met again, we'll talk about it.
No, but it was just a matter of, I mean, are we going to charge, charge for holds anymore?
Which our neighboring libraries are not. Many of our patrons are, it's apparently complaint number one at the circulation desk, forty cents.
The online hold, too, right?
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a fee and people are annoyed. What they do is if they want holds, they will sometimes have it sent to now any neighboring library and pick it up, where according to the rules of the Westchester library system, they're not obligated to pay the fee. So, we're, this-
It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, we're driving patrons away and the income generated is, it's negligible.
One of the, one of the conversations that I, you know, speaking to people in the community have said, you know, I, it's, it's, it's hard enough to have to pay for parking. So, you know, I think something that we should-
That's a new thing, right?
No, we don't.
Right, and we don't get that part, so I think something that we can look into and see if we can-
I mean, I, we can also vote on it.
Do you want to make a motion on the holds?
So, do you want to make a motion for us?
Can you, yeah, why don't you say what it is exactly, or do, do you want me to?
Yeah.
That we will no longer charge, is it forty cents?
Forty cents.
Um, to hold a book. That's it?
For pickup.
For pickup.
For pickup.
We will no longer charge forty cents to hold a book for pickup, recognizing that most of the neighboring communities do not have a charge for that. We will now be in line with our neighboring libraries. So, I make a motion.
For both downtown and the children's-
Yes, the entire system.
So, I make a motion, yes, I need somebody. A second, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jean? You got it?
Hmm, she does, I bet.
That's good, that's a good, that's a good.
Thank you.
And then, is the Policy Committee also, this is not for today, but going to talk about, think, I'm sorry, think about-
I'm the Chair of Special Projects, but I'll-
You're there, you're there.
Are you, are you guys thinking about-
Yeah, yeah.
I have two things.
I was looking up the policy.
Is the Policy Committee thinking about the discussion that we've started to have a little bit around fines generally? Is that something you guys can start to look into?
Yes, we, we did, and you know what, I need to follow up on the data, because I think the concern is how much, I think that was a space that we did gain, was it fifty thousand?
Forty thousand overall, and it's, it's fines across, across the board, room generation fees, et cetera, so it's, it's a, it's a bigger pot of money, and it doesn't all tie to fines, and the, the, the issue, certainly in the, in the county system and nationally, when I went to the National Public Library Association Conference in Philadelphia last month, it was a big issue. You know, should libraries consider revoking fines for children because-
Which I think was the nuance that we were really thinking about.
Right, we were thinking about, because it's proving to be a barrier to access to families who really can't afford to pay for that. And certainly, the issue is, you know, losing revenue generation, but are we recapturing patrons that who are alienated because they can't afford the fee?
So, I would, I would ask that the Policy Committee-
We can put that on the agenda and meet sooner rather than later.
Do you have one more thing?
Yeah, can I suggest one other thing?
How about after the election?
After the fifteen, yes, after the election, of course.
Well, can I suggest what, or ask the Policy Committee to consider one other item, which is a policy on board member communications, specifically, I, I, and again, you guys should meet and consider what you want to do, but I think we should mandate use of the Westchester of the Westchester library system email, um, and a policy that, you know, my guess is the WLS may have a best practice, or some of our partner libraries may have a best practice around, you know, a, not, nothing, nothing intricate, but a policy that states that, you know, board member communications in writing need to happen through the email system, that people shouldn't be using personal emails or other forms of communication for board member, uh, communications.
Is this a...
I would, I'm not, I mean, the Policy Committee should consider it, that's my, I, I would like to ask that the Policy Committee consider it. I'm not presupposing what the answer is, but that, but you guys, I would ask that you consider it.
So, I would love to, also, I think the current members of, I'm not, go ahead, Jean.
You go, and then I'll go.
Yeah, okay.
You're so polite here.
I mean, it seems if right now, everyone's on the, is using WLS.
I'm not using it.
No.
Am I the only one?
No, two people, no.
Who?
So, you could just said it to me.
No, no, but I want to have a, no, 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 it's not, I want to, I think we should